Morning everyone, we ask you to please rise. If you're able to, I hope we pledge allegiance before we convene our Commissioners Public Meeting. Dear gracious and loving God, we thank you for this late summer day that you've granted us. We ask your guidance and protection over the youth that are beginning in the new school year. Given the minds that are eager to learn. Allow them the courage to ask questions, confidence to take risks, and the self-discipline to work hard and study to do their best. And Lord, we pray for the child who may be anxious or fearful. May they feel your comfort and love to know they are not alone. Give them the encouragement and confidence so they can succeed. We thank you for the men and women who have dedicated their lives to education. We pray that their classrooms will be full of patience, kindness, and happiness. Provide them the energy each day to provide an atmosphere of learning and creativity. Lastly, we pray for the parent or guardian as they also experiences changes to their schedules. Some may experience anxiety, fear, or stress as they adapt to sending their children to school. We ask you to comfort them, get them a sense of peace. We ask your guidance over our meeting this morning. These things we humbly ask in your name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. It is the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Morning, everyone. Be the Commissioners Public Meeting at this time, and we'll ask for approval of the minutes of the previous meeting.
I will make a motion.
On your side. Any public comments on agenda items only, people in the audience? On line, Matt. And then we'll move on to bid openings.
Good morning. We have one bid for the replacement of seven transformers, and we received seven bids for that project. Apollo Group came in at $60,000. VA Mexel Electrical came in at $64,955. DR Nato Electrical Construction, $85,498. Hayden Power Group, $87,300. King Bryant, $139,881. Anichi came in at $69,739. And North End Electrical was $177,996.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Your reports.
Commissioners, I have presented for your ratification. Our invoice is due through August 28th, 2024, to be paid on August 21st, 2024, in the amount of $1,063,023.98. The breakdown is the general fund at 47.62% or $505,745.61. Grants came in at 46.92%, at $498,277.54. And RMS came in at 5.46% for $58,083. Do you have any questions on that report?
Okay, motions are settled. Cash requirements?
I'll make the motion.
A second. Questions, comments? Bring in all of your side.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, info, four point one. Amy, Lycum County Library System.
Morning.
You know, I love a handout, so I brought one for everyone. So, good morning Commissioners and Director, and of course, everyone here today. I wanted to thank the Commissioners for giving me some time on today's agenda. I like to give a quarterly update, and I'm Amy Rush. I'm the system administrator for the Lycum County Library System, and I'm the CEO and Director of the James V Brown Library. And I wanted to give the update at this time because we are winding down from summer, as the Commissioner mentioned earlier in his speech, that, you know, we are in the process of closing summer learning. And our program this year was Adventure Begins at Your Library. And the quarterly handout that I passed out, and also that Robin has, if anyone is interested in seeing that, talks about the thousands of kids, teens, and adults who visited one of the six libraries in Lycum County this summer. And one of the things I wanted to highlight is that we had almost 43,000 visits to one of the six libraries this summer, and that's an increase of 11% over 2023. So, we know our communities love libraries, and they visited the library to experience educational programming, to keep their minds sharp over the summer, to engage with their neighbors, meet friends, read, learn, grow. And it's been a really busy summer, which is wonderful, but we are taking a few minutes to come down and start planning our fall events now. But I've talked before about how there's something for everyone at a library, both during summer learning and also all throughout the year. And today, I brought two people to talk to you about how library service has impacted them. Because of course, I love libraries, I'm a librarian, but let them tell you about how much they love their Lycum County libraries. So, without further ado, I will introduce the first person I brought with me today, Carl Frye.
Good morning.
Where are you going?
My name is Carl Frye. I'm a little bit history. I've been retired now for full-time for 21 years, and I've been working 20 years over across the street at the library courthouse with the Commissioner Metzger of CC every once in a while out there. I have been a frequent user of the library for over 50 years. I guess I consider myself as an avid reader. I probably read about a week. I really enjoy it. Strictly a fiction, popular author, fiction reader. James Patterson, Daniel Steele, and so on. One thing I want to tell you, I'm sort of a cheap person, so the books you get, probably familiar with the paper you get, with the if you have paper, when your books are due, the name of the book, and on the bottom of that, they give you a little excerpt on how much money you save by going to the library rather than buying the books. I've already saved about $1,300 this year, books. So, it'll probably be between $1,500 and $2,000 I save by going to the library. So, it's really important for me to go to the library and also have a grandson who frequents the children's library down there, play things on there, so we use that. So, I just might encourage you to keep funding the library as you do. Thank you.
Thank you, Carl. Good to see you.
And I also asked someone else to come with me today. Josh Mosok and his little ones decided to come tell you about how much they love the library.
I'm Josh Mosok. My wife and I live in Loyd Stock. And the library's been a huge source of community for us, resources. I'm a stay-at-home dad, and, you know, just being home with kids all day, yeah, can be something. So, we struggled to find our people and just like things to do here in the day. For the longest time, we didn't go to the library because, you know, it's so I was really blown away the first couple of times I came to James V Brown, and Muncie in particular, that the kids were just allowed to be themselves, you know, respectful, but in a way that we felt welcome right off the bat. And that's really where a lot of my kids' friends have come from, is from the library. My daughter is entering first grade, but she's been reading chapter books for a while now. And we kind of had a loss of resource with reading with what we had at home. So, it's been a great source of opening her mind to creativity and just a lot of books that we wouldn't otherwise have access to. And, yeah, my kids, I feel like they have peers that they wouldn't have otherwise. And that's translated to myself and my wife as well. A lot of our close friends went back through the library just because of even the same day of life. And, you know, otherwise would not have that. So, it's not only been a cool place to be, but it's been welcoming. It's been a great source of community and just education for the kids.
Josh, what's your last name?
Moser.
Thank you for being here.
So, I want to thank both Carl and Josh for coming today. As I said, obviously, I think libraries are important, and I've devoted my entire career to serving communities. And they've told you how the work that we do really does impact everyday people. And I'm really grateful that they took time to come today. Our librarians, our bookmobiles, our brick-and-mortar libraries, all these buildings and facilities and people meet the needs of our community because the county financially supports library service, and I want to thank you for that. We can't do what we do, which includes transforming lives and building community, without your support. I want to take a moment to thank the LCLS trustees that are here with me today, and also introduce Robin DeDoratu, who is the Assistant Director of the James V Brown Library. With me today is John Conver, who is the President of the James V Brown Library. Dennis Carell, who is joining us from the Dr. W. B. Conkle Community Library, right next to him. Of course, Larry Stout from the Montgomery Area Public Library. And Commissioner Mark Lucina, of course, sits on the LCLS board as well. I ask every time, do you have any questions for me?
Are you gonna, are you gonna keep talking?
No, I'm just gonna say thank you again, but you can take it away, sir.
Why, there's a handout, and I guess you guys didn't get it, but we just had a meeting a week or two ago, and they talked about the summer programs, and I don't know what, like, I had my beliefs of what a summer library program is, but when they started, our meeting was in Jersey Shore, and the statistics are here, and she said, yeah, we had 27 programs and 475 participants. I was like, wait, what? You had 400 in Jersey Shore? And as you go through, like, all the, all the libraries had these summer programs, and it's not one program, it's not two. Montgomery Area, Montgomery, who is our, they have to be our smallest community in the county, right? They had 62 programs, and it says it reached 1,030 participants. Larry, is that right? Do you have 1,030 participants in Montgomery County? And it is such, I mean, I mean, the numbers are astounding. And again, I've said this before, the library system does so much more than, than just give places for, you know, people who want to get cheap books and don't want to go buy them. They provide so much other stuff for the community.
And we do that too, though.
Well, yeah, I was in yesterday. I saw you yesterday because I get my, I get DVDs there because, and at the bottom, I always love when it says how much money I've saved by going to the library. But the story that you told, sir, really resonates with, you know, my ex was a stay-home mom, and she wasn't from here, and she met a lot of her friends at the library. Because where do you go? And you go to Storytime, and you go to these programs. And, you know, my kids are older now. My youngest is just starting his senior year today. But I have one in grad school at Pitt, I have one in school up at Bass or in New York. And, and we credit the both, the two, we're from Intoresville, so it was the Conkle and the James V were the two that we hit. And, and we credit them immensely with, with our kids, not only their academic success, but as you said, the social success, because when they were young, their peer groups came from the library. And they met other, you know, my ex met other stay-home moms from the library. And, you know, generally speaking, when you have little kids that are, the parents are bringing them to the library, those are the kids you want your kids to hang out with. So, it is, it's, we're so lucky to have what we have throughout the county. And they do, they do a wonderful job. They do, and, and, you know, like, I've paid attention ever since my kids were there. And, but when I see things like this, it's more impressive than I thought, and when they fired off these statistics of the summer programs, and to just get the kids involved, and it's more ways than just reading. So, anyway, I, I know. And I, there's a big stat here at the top, but it was a fourth point. In the last six months, over 2,000 Lycum County residents have signed up for new library cards. 51,000 residents in Lycum County have a library card. And how many residents do we have in Lycum County? 100.
100.
100, so we're almost at, you know, 50%. It is, we're very lucky to have what we have, and I think, I know you have, you know, you've just kind of carried the torch, but Amy's done a lot of things to kind of clean up and, and, because there's rules and regulations and everything in libraries too. And she's done a lot of things to clean it up and to modify it and to, to make sure we're following all the rules and regulations to keep our funding, which at the end of the day, for all these public entities, you know, you've got to, you know, dot your i's and cross your t's to make sure you keep your funding. And she's done a nice job with that, so I just thank you and your staff. And, and we are blessed to have this system. We really are.
Well, thank you, Commissioner. And if there's nothing else from the other Commissioners, I have one last shameless plug. September is library card signup month, so if you don't have a library card, this is the perfect time to come, get a library card, and see all the savings that you can have and all the community that you can receive. You, your children, we want everybody in our community to have a library card, because there's so many services. We're so much more than books, and I know that that's really different for a lot of people because they came from the time period where librarians had buns and glasses and gave books. Well, we're a little bit more than that now, so I do hope that you will come and check us out. And thank you so much, Commissioners, for your time. As usual, I really appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Point two, Mike. Elected official personnel actions.
You know, it's real hard to read a children's book on a tablet, and then you got to pull the stuff out, and it moves its arm. Your tablet doesn't scratch and sniff, as I was saying, I can't do any of that. Then a blue light blinds them, and they don't go to sleep. Personnel, elected official personnel actions, we've got four in the district attorney's office. Lenell Cromley, paralegal, seven, full-time, $21.52 an hour, 75 hours per pay period with an anticipated transfer date, September 1, 2024. Tara Snow, clerk three, pay grade four, full-time, $16.1728 per hour, 75 hours per pay period with an anticipated start date, September 9, 2024. Jordan Stugert, clerk three, pay grade four, full-time, $15.0458 per hour, 75 hours per pay period, anticipated start date, September 9, 2024. And wrapping up our last one, Nathaniel Miller, clerk three, pay grade four, full-time, $15.162 per hour, 75 hours per pay period with an anticipated start date, September 9, 2024.
Okay, thank you.
Personnel action, Mike.
Approve the following personnel actions as conditional offer of employment, subject to the successful completion of a background check and all other employment conditions. Excuse me, as outlined in attachment A. In the prison, Rory Batson, correctional officer. Union position, full-time, $20 per hour, 80 hours per pay period, anticipated start date, September 2, 2024. In the pre-release center, Tracy Canfeld, resident supervisor, one, union position, full-time, $18.64 per hour, 80 hours per pay period, anticipated start date, September 23, 2024. Domestic relations, Allison Allen, domestic relations officer, pay grade four, full-time, $15.4508 per hour, 75 hours per pay period, anticipated start date, September 9, 2024. In the public defender's office, Richard Nixon, temporary law clerk, pay grade 12, full-time, $57,876 per year, 75 hours per pay period, anticipated start date, September 3, 2024. Also in the public defender's office, Marine Malagros Archibald Corion, temporary law clerk 12, or temporary law clerk, pay grade 12, full-time, $57,876 per year, 75 hours per pay period, anticipated start date, September 3, 2024. And wrapping up here, the resource management services. Jim McLaughlin, recycling laborer, pay grade four, full-time, $14.50 per hour, 80 hours per pay period. That's an anticipated start date, September 3, 2024.
Motion? Yeah, I'll make the motion. Second, I have a question.
Yes.
The two public defender positions.
Yes.
Law clerks, will they, will they review the approved by salary board?
So, these two positions are, they are open as a public defender, assistant public defender, and they're going to come onboard. They're awaiting the results of their, their bar exam, and then pending their successful completion, they'll roll into a permanent position.
Does the temporary law clerk position have to be approved prior to find the salary board? That's my question. Do you know that, Director?
I'm not sure, other than I know that this practice applies several times in the past in the public defender's office. To bring in folks that are, haven't passed the bar but can still do the work in our
Like.
We can, we will confirm.
Okay, we go ahead and vote on that prior to us confirming it? Okay. All right, and on your side? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
At this time, we'll recess Commissioners Public Meeting for the Development Block Grant Public Hearing.
Thank you very much.
Good morning.
Good morning. How are you? Today, we are here to have a public hearing for a budget modification for the county's 2021 CDBT block grant program. What we're doing is the Habitat for Humanity Acquisition Phase Two is complete in South Williamsport Borough, so they are electing to move the remaining $41,956 to a program for readiness skills development at the North Central Site Services. So, that would create a new project for the 41,956. Are there any comments or questions on that modification?
Do you have a line?
Hearing none. That's all we needed to do.
Okay, thank you. Public hearing at this time, reconvene the Commissioners Public Meeting. Amy?
Okay, so today, I'm looking for action to approve the submission of this 2021 budget modification to DC.
Motion to approve the submission.
I'll make the motion.
A second. On their side.
Thank you.
Thank you.
10.2, Brett.
Morning Commissioners. I am seeking your approval to amend the agreement with forming law firm for the assessment solicitor and extend it to from July 1, 2024 to July 1, 2028.
Motion?
I'll make the motion.
A second. Off your side.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Where are you, Ryan?
7.3275.
Morning.
Morning.
The first item I have for you, 7.3, it's about to improve the 2024, 2025 MTP sub-recentment launching agreement. This is ours to the pasture funds that we get through this service through STEP. And I did bring along Dan Mark from STEP to kind of give an update on how much service and trips they've all provided to our residents.
Where are you, Dan? Can you come up there, please? Dan, how long have you been with STEP now?
A people might think too long.
I think that's what he was hitting.
30-plus years, 37 years, and counting part-time work, about 40 years. So, well, again, good morning Commissioners. We're asking Commissioners to approve the sub-recentment agreement with Lycum County to operate the medical assistance transportation program through the Department of Human Services. STEP provides assistance in three main components. One is the shared ride transportation program, the vehicles that you see going through Lycum and Clayton Counties, and various other points for medical appointments. We provide assistance, reimbursement for people who have access to a personal vehicle in the form of mileage reimbursement, and we also provide for individuals on bus lines, bus pass assistance through River Valley Transit Authority, take the bus to their medical appointments. Last year, or actually this year, we're projecting approximately, we'll serve 1,430 clients, customers in a medical assistance program, and we're projecting about 34,107.
Thank you. Dan, how many years did you serve as an umpire?
40.
40.
How many were you a good umpire?
No, he's one of the best umpires I've seen. Probably if I ask, he worked for about three years. I'm showing my age because when he was pitching, I was umpiring.
Yeah, you were an excellent umpire.
Thank you.
Now you retired from it. Thank you for your service to the kids in that field too. Thank you. Motion?
I'll make the motion.
A second. On your side.
The next item goes hand in hand, so in order to pass through this, we've got to accept the award of the grant fund. So, 7.4, that's what that is, that's the allocation for the MTP program.
Motion, I'll make the motion.
A second. On your side.
And the last item I have for you is vote to approve on the list of contracts approved by the Director of Administration for the month of July, and we had five.
Motion to accept those contracts?
I'll make that motion.
A second. On your side. Thank you, Mike.
Right, thank you.
Nancy?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Jima Fornation is asking for your approval for 2425 season tour music services. The children from Reading, it's a non-profit mental, and behavior health, education systems care for at-risk children using the families. There's girls' residential, boys' residential, and special ed residential, and a couple others that we have to contract for that doesn't use.
And has a breakdown of all the different fees?
Yeah.
Ranging from 5%.
We don't use a lot, so we keep it on our back pocket, and this is, you're gonna see, it looks like it's a little bit much for the increases, but we've been contacting the center for two years, so.
Okay, the ranges are anywhere from 5% to 72% based on the service.
Correct. And that 1% to 72% one, we don't, I don't think we use that.
Who, you was down there now?
No, no one's there now.
All right. All right, can I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
A second. On their side.
Thank you, Commissioners. Have a good day.
You too, thank you.
7.7. Any change order with the board?
Where are you, Ken? What are your questions?
Morning. Before you, is a change order with port elevator for elevator retrofit that we have them under contract for, is to replace the doors, add that to project. That we have them under contract for is to replace the doors, adding that to project. Guys all are where we, having a few issues with them, elevator down so far so much, so we. Decided we need to add them to the project as well.
It is twenty twenty four budget. Motion?
I'll make the motion.
Now second.
I mean, the issue is the elevator is just so old, it's hard to get slaps.
Yeah, they're, they're originally quite much their building.
Thirty years. Yeah, that makes it tough.
We're out.
Thank you, thank you.
Kristen, you online?
Morning.
Morning commissioners. Seven point eight is to approve this subrecipient agreement with the YWCA. For utilize any ARPA funds for electrical upgrade.
Okay, this is coming out of the ARPA monies.
I'll make the motion.
Now second. All fair side? Thank you.
This is Monica, Monica Fox, she is our new EC, this way we have a white coming county for your CDBG, so she's following me around.
Jamie is gonna play the part of Jenny.
I am.
And Monica.
And Monica, yep. All right, so seven point nine is the vote to approve the standard twenty twenty three subrecipient agreement with South Williamsport Borough. The amount is one hundred thousand three hundred and thirty dollars, it's their approved CDBG budget for twenty twenty three, we have the contract. That's in place, so now we're able to do subrecipient agreement.
And motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. All fair side?
Next item, same thing, this is for the twenty twenty three project that you funded with the like coming county water and sewer authority in the amount of two hundred and seven thousand eight hundred and sixty two dollars for their route forty four project.
I'll make the motion.
Now second. All fair side?
And then the next one is the twenty twenty two agreement for the funds again that you approved for that route forty four project at the amount of one hundred and twenty one thousand one hundred and thirty eight.
I'll make the motion.
Second. All fair side?
Thank you very much.
Welcome Monica.
And just, I remember when I was new. And not that I'm not new anymore, but all those acronyms and I didn't know what they, CDBG is community development. So yeah, it is, it is a community development block grant. That's state, I assume, right?
Seven twelve through seven sixteen, Jason.
Where you Jason?
Good morning commissioners, good morning director.
Hey, you got the last five.
Yes, sir, we've got some good ones today. Commissioners, for your approval, seven point one two, vote to approve the change order number five with RNAO Development, the amount of eight hundred thousand eight hundred thirty seven dollars and sixty eight cents. This is part of the ongoing massive construction closure work we're doing. This includes the piping, wellheads, pumps and all the goodies to go with twenty two wells that we'll be installing. Part of our closure fund.
Okay, motions?
I will make the motion.
I'll second. All fair side?
Thank you, seven point one three, votes approved purchase of CS controls from state chemical, the amount of twenty four thousand nine hundred and eight dollars and forty cents. This is an annually budgeted item, this is chemical that we put in our pipes as we pump leachate and gas through them. There's a yellow buildup and this softens it, allows us to be able to jet it out, so it's a constant maintenance chemical that we utilize each year.
Okay, motions?
I'll make the motion.
Now second. All fair side?
Hey, Commissioner, seven point one four, vote to approve the agreement with syn toss, the amount of four thousand one hundred and four dollars per month. For AEDs, this is, the county is going on, they'll be utilizing syn toss to provide the AEDs throughout the entire county facilities. This isn't just RMS, I'm presenting it, this is for countywide. This is funded through a P core grant that Alan Little, your county safety manager, Maya Toon and the safety committee. Had been working on for a while quite a bit. This will guarantee they will maintain the AEDs, they'll maintain the batteries and so forth. The one thing about, I know as personally as AEDs is, yeah, you let them sit on the wall, but within a year or two, they've switched the model, they've switched the batteries. And there is a, there is a strong percentage of times when people have tried to utilize AEDs in an actual emergency and they failed to have battery source, so I think this is a positive for the county. For safety.
This is something my is working on across the county.
Yes.
For some time. It makes sense. Motion?
I'll make the motion.
Now second. All fair side?
Seven point one five. Director McDermott, do you have the proclamation?
Yeah, I can read.
That I could read, I do not have, it is on my desk, I apologize.
Resolution?
Yes, sir. Thank you. My apologies. Resolution two zero two four dash fourteen. A resolution to temporary waive count, like coming county resource management services. Landfill disposal fees to those within the identified like coming county municipalities that were affected by the August ninth, twenty twenty four disaster. Whereas the county of like coming encountered flooding from the August ninth, two thousand twenty four disaster. As per the declaration of disaster by the like coming county commissioners. And whereas, public infrastructure businesses and individuals in the county of like coming incurred damages. And whereas the county of like coming, steer of relieving county like coming, yeah, like coming county landfill disposal fee. Burdens associated with recovery efforts from said disaster event or impacted municipalities. Now therefore, we get resolved by the like coming county commissioners. That landfill disposal fees charged by like coming county resource management services, LCRMS, shall be waived. This waiver will expire on September twentieth, twenty twenty four for the flood debris disposal solely due to the recovery from said disaster event. All other debris which is not due to said disaster will, event shall not be eligible for this fee waiver. All flood related debris from impacted municipalities will only be accepted at the landfill and not the transfer station. Impacted municipalities through like coming county EMA will update the list of locally authorized haulers of flood debris for record tracking purposes. Municipalities are to coordinate with their haulers of flood debris for record trafficking. Oh, excuse me, with their residents for collection of flood debris to be disposed of at the like coming county landfill, this resolution shall take effect immediately. So, this per the like coming county commissioners, this resolution. Any waste that is identified as debris from the flooding event in the affected municipalities, which commissioners correct me, we have eleven affected declarations for municipalities, eleven? Those are the ones that are eligible, EMA and EMCs that work with those municipalities through Jeff Hutchins and his team at the EMA. We have been tracking, we've only had a few so far, but this'll, this'll go on to September twentieth currently. September twentieth is the date the DEP set for their waiving of their six dollars and twenty five cent fees. I also have a request, email request into Brady Township to waive their dollar post fee as well. Now they do not meet till September sixth or seventh, but I don't anticipate a situation there. Once this is approved and signed by the Board of Commissioners today, I will pass this resolution on to Brady Township for the record as well. But this is definitely a different precedent. And tracking is, it's the devil of details. Make sure that nobody else is taking advantage of situation with disposal is, is, is the difficult part. But we are, we are set up for it, EMA has been good to work with us, give us emails, Director McDermott's been sending us emails as well. So I think, I think it's a win, I think it's gonna take quite a while to recover, we have a lot of citizens that are experiencing a definitely change in life, I would say, they've lost everything, so. I appreciate the commissioners. Initiative on this and working through it.
Okay, thank you, motion?
Commissioner. One administrative, the action item as it's written.
Yes.
This should be vote to ratify approval of resolution.
Said vote to approve, it's vote to ratify?
Vote to ratify the approval.
Okay.
Hey, you know, motion to accept that language first?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. All fair side?
I'll make a motion.
And then regarding the resolutions, can I have a motion?
I'll make that motion too.
I'll second. Like to make a comment regarding that, all three of us have been up to outrun area that it's noted there's other eleven hundred communities, ten or communities have been affected, eleven total. And the devastation is just incredible. We were up there on Monday, met with head of Department of Transportation, Mike Carroll. He, he made some, he made a comment that, that hit home. And what he said is, there's nothing more disheartening, drive by somebody's home and seeing everything in a pile from a flood in front of that residence, knowing that everything that they've worked for is piled in front of that residence. This is a way that we can continue to assist the public, helping them try to put their lives back together. And we have folks up there that are still going up there for meals. They have portable showers up there, you know, they're utilizing those, or just taking a shower, something that we take for granted every day. We were at the Hever Township Fire Hall on Monday and you heard us, these people were being rescued, things that you don't think about. Not only were the individuals rescued, but their pets were rescued. And what does a fire hall do with a pet that's being rescued? And they had to call in different, and these, to try to assist them with that. People that are on medications, and medications are left behind as they're being rescued. Things like a dementia patient being rescued. Person who has no one in the area, and where do they go, they don't have any family. So they contact the local church to try to assist them, they were able to place them in a nursing home. People that are on oxygen, their oxygen is ready to run out, now what do they do? And first responders were absolutely incredible as they responded to these, these unique situations. Rescue these individuals that were at arm's length. So we heard these stories, especially on Monday night, it just hit home, you know, what can the county do? Try to assist them in any way we can. And we heard from Mike Carroll and he said that, you know, he was up there talking about just infrastructure. Get a temporary road built within three days or three, three weeks. And then have the bridge rebuilt, or the bridge and the road, Route fifteen complete hopefully within a year. And, but he said he'd be back. And it's critical that, that we heard from the state and they were there. But just the overall, everybody coming together to assist. The private businesses bringing in water and, and the food that people donated from all the communities and you know, Washington Township was affected, Woodward Township was affected, there were so many communities, you know, even in Williamsport, Jackson School. Jackson School had damage and here we have a school being opened. And what, what they've done to get that school open, but you know, there's a concern about the school starting and those kids are bussed, and where do they get picked up now and the safety of those, of those children? Because you're talking about four, four buses that come to school and back home each day. And to make sure the safety of those, those children is a top priority. So we heard all these concerns and there's good teams up there working on this. Communities will be rebuilt, what can the county do to try to assist and clean up as part of it? They have a DRC work crews up there, courts have sent probation people up there to work to help clean up, we want to thank them. For cooperating and helping those residents, you know, just things like shovel and mudge and help them get rid of the debris, but when you think about it, when you drive, I remember back in the two thousand eleven, driving out of E7. And just seeing the piles of people's lives, belongings, just sitting there along the highway waiting to get picked up. How heartbreaking that was. And, and who's gonna pay for that, so by us waiving those fees, it's a way to assist them.
Commissioner, I would like to extend a, a thank you to the Department of Environmental Protection, North Central Office, because they too. None of this, this really didn't start off until we, we couldn't do any of this without the Department of Environmental Protection and the state. State made the declaration, you the county commissioners made the declaration, municipalities made the declaration. Larry Holly, who is the Department Head of the Solid Waste for the state, that he put out his declaration to waive the sixth quarter. My staff, I want to thank my staff because what you don't see behind the scenes is the tracking, the trying to track all this and we are responsible to still report everything, so a big thank you to my team. Gave them the initiative from you guys, moved forward and we got it put together and tried to get, get our software set up so we can knowledge and know who's coming, so thank you very much.
Thank you, we also want to thank our local Penn dot, you know, Mike Carroll noted that his workers, you know, through Penn dot. Our local Penn dot was, was there on the scene, have been there on the scene, have been working with the local officials hand in hand and we want to thank them all, so they've been tremendous. As Mike noticed, noted on Monday, his workers are the best.
And to echo what, what you just said, Jason, we know when we made the declaration about waiving the fees, that it was gonna create more work for your guys because of the details and the tracking. But it was, you know, it's just our way of helping out our fellow neighbors. And, and we appreciate you guys, your staff and your team for going above and beyond.
Okay, motion second, all in favor, say aye? Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, lastly, seven point one six. Vote to approve a permit modification with DEP Waste Management Program in the amount of three hundred dollars. Missioners, we have an operational permit, as all landfills do in the state of PA, and then that permit, our break down to every minute detail, how much cover we use. Everything, the drawings of the landfill, the future cells, there is nothing left to guess, it's all in detail. So when you make changes to the facility, you have to get what we call minor permit mod. There are major mods, minor mods, and then there's letters, and this is a minor mod. These things will, that we are going to be changing and replacing and building new, will be a new fuel island. And the forest main that we've talked so many years about, that we are ready soon to be going out to bid for, that will go up past a water tower down along Allenwood Camp Lane, and also the south entrance exit. As we see the development of our area with Digger, Chance, the warehousing. It's, it's quite obvious that we need to have an additional entrance exit to landfill. Also, we've had track, truck accidents that have blocked off our one entrance. So this south entrance exit will be greatly appreciated by the haulers and the staff, so those three changes all need to be encapsulated, shown in design work, all it has to be on our permit mod, so. And DEP's fee for permit mod is three hundred dollars. So it doesn't matter how many modifications you put on it, it's a three hundred dollar fee, so we've got three of them put together for one change.
Motion?
I'll make the motion.
Now second. All fair side? Thank you. I, I was a little discouraged to read on a, in a social media news outlet, not, not the one represented by Commissioner Messina. I took a couple shots at some of our elected officials. Dedicate their time to Little League as uncles. They felt that that was a, that was a bad thing. That there was county business going on and state business going on and these two gentlemen were at Little League for two weeks. That, that's very discouraging to me, I, I think it's, they're, 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 they should be honored that they dedicate their time to Little League, not, not disgraced for, for doing that. I'll speak in, in defense of Commissioner Metzger. During the two weeks, especially with a, you know, we, we had the disaster happen, a flood disaster happen. He didn't miss a single meeting about the flood disaster, showed up, he made the time, he worked the nights.
Um, plus he dedicated his time to his, to his team. Very honorable. Um, so I, I just wanted to make that comment, because I just think that was so poor of someone in social media to throw that out there, that that was a bad thing these guys were doing. It's definitely a positive thing that they're doing. Um, the other thing I kind of want to throw out, because I, I think it ties together a national thing, and I don't want to get super political, but, um, you know, as, as next November election comes around, and, and we have a, a candidate that says they will stop fracking day one. That's your, Commissioner Metzger mentioned earlier about some water, showers, command centers, food. Um, all of the, the water, the, the fresh water brought in, the bathrooms brought in, the showers brought in. That was brought by the gas industry. Without that fracking industry here, like Coming County, I'm not sure what, I mean, I, I would hope there'd be another business that would step up, and I'm sure there would be. But I want to make a comment that they're the first to step up and offer help. And that, that to me is just amazing as well, of that industry. Uh, you may disagree with what their job is. To them, it's a job, it's just no different than anybody else's. But their, their dedication to our community is also huge, and, and I'd hate to lose that industry in our world. They just, they just do so much for us. Um, and, and, and with saying that, I just want to also carry out, and I know we all feel the same way, you know, we just have, there's so many caring and giving people in this community. When you go up to those sites, and, um, I, I was, this, this week also up to Roston. Roston still needs a lot of work. They got a lot of, uh, uh, trees and debris under the bridge, the main bridge going through Roston area. So they got some work to do yet. Trout Run, it's amazing how the, the community pulled together. Everything is cleaned up. Uh, our Penn Dot crew, that bridge is gone already, that, that was damaged, the one support side is gone already. Uh, it's just moving along so quickly. But it's so, it's, it's volunteers, you know, and we, we're, we're lucky that, you know, we've, we've been invited to meetings and, and met these volunteers and saw what they've done, and it's just incredible to be a part of a community, and I know I said this last week, but it's just so incredible to be part of a community that, that comes together and really helps all their neighbors out. And, and I, I just think that, that's a wonderful thing. Our first responders. You know, I, again, you know, Commissioner Metzger mentioned that we were the other evening in, in Pepperton Fire Hall for a meeting. And the whole meeting was about how do we do it better? You know, we, we got through this, we did a great job, but let's, let's show what we did, and let's talk about how we do it better the next time. Which again, I mean, you couldn't ask for anything better, anything more from your first responders than reviewing what they did and saying, how do we do it better? Just, just an awesome feeling to have, so I just wanted to put that out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I need to piggyback. I did not read the, the, the online report about the Little League uncles. Um, but Scott has been one for a dozen or so years, so has Jamie Flick, the state representative. And, and I agree that outreach, now I know Jamie's on, they're on recess, and they, you know, he uses it, he's in a different position, but, um, there's a lot of dignitaries that come here for Little League, and it's a, uh, I know, uh, McCormick, who's running for Senate was here the other day. And so there's a lot of, of me reading, it's, I, I think he does a lot of his political work while he's over there. But, um, yeah, I agree, Scott was at every important meeting that we needed. Um, and, and some of the lesser important meetings, he was on the phone. So I know he's been busy. And we had one, we had a meeting where we needed two of us to go to, so Mark and I went because to, to, so Scott didn't have to. But, um, if it was important, especially with the, with the flood, Scott was there in person. So, um, yes, that is, it is disappointing to read that, because he has been, it, it's, it's not like he took a two-week vacation. That is, that is far from, from the truth.
I'm not interrupting, but even if he did, people deserve a vacation. And if that's what he chooses to on his vacation, so be it.
Yeah, but he, he was tempted. And, and then a point that you brought up about the, our two and a half hour meeting at Heveron the other day. It just got a bunch of people together, and as you talk about, how do we do it better? And the one guy said, you know, this was our process and it didn't work. And there was another guy said, well, in Saladesburg, this is what we did. And you'd heard him, and the guy's like, yep, that would work better. Next time we'll do that. So it, it was a, a little microcosm of what we need in bigger parts of society to get the people together and just to listen to ideas and to try to do it better. And, um, so that was encouraging. Um, on a, a discouraging level, this year, obviously, the Little League classic, we, the Yankees, which is great. Next year, we'll have the Mets, which is a little disappointing, but you know, you take the go with the bat. Isn't that right, Scott?
Hey. Good opportunity for the kids. So it's neat watching them interact with the big leers, you know, it's, it's I remember one kid over there this week, got a chance to meet his hero, and he had tears in his eyes. That's what it's about, so. That, that emotion, so making memories for the kids. Doesn't hit them until, I think probably one year later in their years. They go home, they start thinking about, wow, we were actually something that most kids don't get a chance to experience, so.
I think the parents get it way more than the kids do.
I, I think that, you know, like to Scott's point there, I think when they get older and they realize, um, so I have a cross cutter living with me right now, and, and he remembers when he, he says, I'm gonna have to figure out how, exactly how old I was, but I remember my dad bringing me to Williamsport, how excited I was to come to Little League. He says, now, you know, now here I am, Ford, and I'm, and I'm playing baseball for the cross cutter and living in Williamsport, so, but, but he said that excitement to him was, at the time, he probably didn't realize it, but now when he looks back, he's, he's so excited about it.
And, uh, again, we want to thank everybody who's working on, on the flood relief efforts. Kind of takes some time to put things back, these communities, but each day, they, they make progress. And, uh, you know, it was encouraging to hear Secretary Carroll. Uh, I want to thank Joe Hamm, he brought him here. Uh, and also, uh, Representative Cut, Custer.
Yep, coming up.
You know, I'm sorry, Cutter, he was here. Uh, he actually was here the night before, drove back to Lancaster, and then was back up here the next morning. And, and, uh, one of the leaders in the House critical that we have him here, because he helps argue for those monies that come to this area. And, uh, you know, by Joe bringing him here, that's an advocate for Lake Coming County. So we want to thank him for traveling back from Lancaster the following morning, and it was a very short night for him. Joe said if he would have known that, he would have offered to let him stay at his house. But I guess he had to take a gentleman back to the Lancaster. So, uh, but we want to thank him for coming back the following day. And so these state officials visit that area, then they're advocates. You know, they, they, they want to help us. And it's critical, because stated, um, in the press, that is, that area is Route 995. And just when we were up there, the traffic that goes up there is incredible. It's, uh, you know, it goes up to New York State, it's commerce, the gas industry, so many vehicles travel that road. So. Put them back together, get the fire company back. The fire company lost half the building. They have a missile lick. Still there, and they're still helping. And it's just, you know, it's mind-boggling how how the resilience, the resiliency, so we want to thank.
You may.
Yeah, and, and, uh, Mike Carroll, the head of Penn Dot, also said it's their number one priority. Make sure that, that the series helps statewide, statewide, yep. Okay, do we have any comments for the public? Any audience? Here again, from the audience, any online? We ask you to please keep your comments brief and to county issues.
Right. Jacob Stopper. Thomas Adams. Morning, Lake Coming County. I regret not being able to physically attend. My loss for a game. Thank you for a great library system. As in everything, it takes good people to make things great. As we are witnessing for government intervention through bureaucratic regulations and overreach, federal and state, I intend to offer farmers money for the purpose environmental impact studies. Use certain methods for certain crops, working on laws. Point is, must do everything we can to keep our farmers independent from government financial ties. Once the money is accepted, this gives an avenue for agents to allow environmental groups to take control of the land that has been tied to these agreements. This is something going on. Nationwide. Got the specific title given to this action. This is something of which we all need to be aware. Also, see a rise in violent anti-American protesters, along with anti-Semitism being attached to the Democratic Party. Certainly not endorsed by every Democrat. Must ask ourselves, when do we, as God-fearing Americans, say no to this evil and disassociate ourselves from this? Tell our governing authorities to stop the wicked. If we remain silent, especially those brothers and sisters of the Democratic Party, this evil will continue to grow. I think 20th century history shouts this to us. Thank you, John Fetterman, for not attending the Democrat National Convention for these very reasons. We want America to be blessed by God. We cannot support people who support such activities or remain silent, especially when they are open and praised by influential members of their party. Must ensure this program, see, does not see the light of day in Lake Coming. Thank you for all you do, and thank you for this opportunity.
And here are comments from anyone? You know, we have completed our agendas, we'll be adjourned until Thursday, August 29th. Thank you.